Welcome to the Select Board Meeting of September 11th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And I would ask that we remain standing in memory of victims of September 11th. Thank you very much. Excuse me, item 189, appointment Fire Department Chief, Connerdy.
Good evening. Tonight, I have one member outgoing and another member incoming. Firefighter Cliff Camo. I'd like to recommend him for the position of limited assignment firefighter upon his retirement, which is, tonight is his last shift. As I've mentioned before, limited assignment firefighters help us do details when we can't get the permanent firefighters to fill them. Firefighter Camo has had a great career. He served the town for 34 years. He actually started 34 years ago today, September 11th, 1989, as a civilian dispatcher. He became a firefighter on March 27th, 1995. He attended the, started the academy September 11th, 1995. He has been a great partner when I was partners with him. A great firefighter, a great friend, a great union leader, and we're gonna miss him in the, in his capacity as a full-time firefighter. But I believe he'll be a great addition to the ranks of limited assignment firefighter.
Thank you, Chief. With the Chief's recommendation, I appoint Cliff Camo to the position of limited assignment firefighter at the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. I see firefighter Camo in attendance tonight. Why don't you come on up? I wanna thank you for your, for your service, Cliff. Come on up.
That's Cliff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for 34 years.
Thank you.
And more.
Thank you, buddy. Thanks for everything.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's Cliff. 34 years. Awesome.
So next up, I would like to recommend Benjamin Fiski for appointment to the position of firefighter paramedic. Mr. Fiski was one of several candidates from the last eligible firefighter list. He did background checks by our staff, the detectives from the Burlington Police Department and the Human Resources Department. He passed all those steps and was moved on to the, moved on and passed the medical and physical ability testing. He currently works as a, at a private ambulance company as a paramedic. He's been an emergency medical technician since 2019 and a paramedic for nearly two years. He comes highly recommended from his current and former employers. We also have a couple of guys that have worked with him and speak very highly of him. He's certified as a Massachusetts National Paramedic. He's certified in advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support, and CPR. I'm pleased to recommend Benjamin Fiski for appointment to the position of firefighter paramedic at the Burlington Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. With the Chief's recommendation, I wish, wish to appoint Mr. Benjamin Fiski to the position of firefighter paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive his 15-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Congratulations, Ben.
Yeah?
It's all one. Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
We started basketball team.
Yeah.
We won't need a ladder.
Chief, do you wanna grab a couple of pictures or?
Oh, yeah.
You got family, there's family here, they wanna take a picture?
Yeah, Mom's here.
They're smiling. Yes, they are.
Oh, come on up. Right, right, right in front here.
Chief Connerdy, Fire Department, you starting a basketball team now? If not, they should.
I believe he's a hockey player.
Thanks, Chief.
Good?
Yep.
So that was just one. I know we've got more vacancies than that. Are there, are there firefighters in the works there?
Seven more.
Yeah.
We've got quite a ways to go.
Okay. Are we at the interviewing stage on any of them?
We anticipate that, requesting a new list starting tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll get a fresh list and begin the process all over again.
Okay, great, thank you. Item 190, appointment, Paul, one applicant for the Housing Partnership Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At one of our last meetings, we had a qualified applicant with housing-related skills and I wish to appoint Mr. Jack Nagel to position on the Burlington Housing Partnership and ask the board to waive his 15-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. I don't, I didn't ask Jack to be in attendance.
He's online.
Oh, he's online.
I can't unmute him, so I sent him a chat.
That's okay. Hey, Jack, how are you?
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Nope, not, not, not much to say, just thank you for the opportunity, looking forward to working with the rest of the Housing Partnership.
And the feeling's mutual, Jack, we look forward to working with you. You're very kind to the table and I'm thrilled that you accepted that position with us. Thanks again.
No, thank you.
Okay, item 191, I'm very pleased to introduce Dr. Susan Moffett Bruce, newly appointed President and CEO at Leahy Hospital. Welcome.
Thank you.
Great to see you again.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Hello, everybody. My name's Susan. I am the President of Leahy Hospital Medical Center. If it pleases the group, I'll just give you maybe a little update about myself and why I'm here and then just maybe a little update on how Leahy, what we're up to these days, just down the road from you.
Sure, of course.
So I'm, I've been here for six months and a bit. I look to my colleagues here, Michelle and Scott, and I am a cardiothoracic surgeon by training and trade and I come to you by way of Ottawa, Ontario, Canada. And previously before that, I served as the Executive Director and Chief Quality Officer at The Ohio State University in Columbus, Ohio. So I've been back and forth over the borders and been very pleased to be so. As the President of Leahy, I'm now here and I'm responsible for the organization, which is incredibly busy. Suffices to say, this is our 100th anniversary of Leahy. April 3rd, 1923 is when Dr. Frank Leahy first created the entity, which is a community, which is a specialty practice with ambulatory clinics as well as a hospital since created. We've been in Burlington for 43 years and very proud to be so. Just to give you a sense of how busy we are, we have seen in the last year about 800,000 ambulatory visits. So every day, we're seeing thousands of patients in our clinics. Our emergency room, we are seeing over 60,000 patients per year and so very, very busy. We are, like other hospitals, also incredibly proud of the work our nurses and physicians and staff do, but we're very aware that we do have quite a bit of a workforce crisis, as do most healthcare institutions in this country because of COVID and the demands on our colleagues. And so we're very mindful to try to retain, attract and retain our colleagues and been very proud to have a nursing force and a physician force that continues to care for patients every day. This time next year, in August of 2024, we will be opening our UMass Chan Leahy Medical School. This is a very unique opportunity for us as a community to train the next generation of physicians. We will bring into the Leahy campus 25 new medical students, which will join the cohort of about 200 at the Worcester campus, but we will have 25 dedicated to Leahy and we are accredited as such as a medical school. So a great opportunity to be really unique and we're so, so invested in the community and to train truly physicians that we hope will stay within the community as well. Maybe I'll just summarize a few other things that are happening, one of which is the radiation oncology service and expansion. This will be on the footprint of the current Leahy Hospital. We've actually found a place not far from the emergency room where we'll be able to give extraordinary care in the realm of radiation oncology. We hope that by December of 2024, we will be seeing our first patients and they are, we truly will be able to provide more care as well as high-quality care, state-of-the-art care to patients with cancer. And then lastly, just to share that we do have continuous quality rankings that speak to the outstanding care our providers provide to our patients, but also speak to how we are continuing to really kind of provide innovative, thoughtful and timely care to our patients in the community where they want the care most often. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or share any information that might be of help to the board.
Certainly, and I'm sure, I'm sure the board has some questions or comments. Jim, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just trying to look it up. I saw on health grades, we came in at, what, number three?
Number five, yes, yes.
I was trying to find it, 'cause I forgot my number.
Yeah, yeah.
But we met on White Ribbon Day, which was an amazing event. But I have to apologize to you because I did show up. I brought my name tag, I was trying, I did show up. But we had a pre-scheduled meeting with Congressman, so I stuck around as long as I could. I did run into Scott and.
It was a great event, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, the half hour, I was there.
Yeah, well represented, yeah.
As long as you know, I mean, I've dealt with John and Eas over the years, Scott, Michelle, you've got a great staff over there.
Terrific.
We are, we are so appreciative of having such a community neighbor. And a little trivia, and I always tell people this when they talk about Leahy Clinic, is Leahy Clinic has its own zip code, 01805. So that's another unique feature of Leahy.
Terrific, thank you.
We'll be seeing, I'll keep the next appointment, how's that?
That's terrific, yes, we look forward to that.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Mr. Priest?
I have no questions. I appreciate you taking the time to come down here and speak with us and let us know, you know, the wonderful things that Leahy continues to do. Truly an institution over the years and hopefully under your guidance and leadership will continue to be so as a part of the whole Beth Israel, you know, family, which is, which is great. So thank you for making the time tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Susan, thank you for coming and welcome. Pro graduate of the Ohio, Ohio State University. So that was great to hear. I just wanted to also thank you for the update and I think I consider us very lucky and our community fortunate to have such a world-class health facility right here in town. It's one of the many things that make Burlington a wonderful place. You guys add to that all the time. So thank you for all the updates and good luck with the position. And if there's anything we can ever do to help you, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us or our office.
Yeah, terrific, thank you very much. I think we're, we're very fortunate not only to have the legacy and the excellence at Leahy, but to be supported by the BILH system. I think it's, it just speaks to strength upon strength, so we're looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. What else can be said? It's pretty much all there. I just, I'm just thrilled about this whole town. You being in this town makes it the staple point in this between, I tell everyone, you don't have to leave Burlington for anything. You really don't. You can go anyplace you want and we have the world-class hospital.
World-class.
Right up there with us, so I wish you all the best of luck in your position and hopefully you don't see anybody else on that side of it, but you know, we know it's there for us, so thank you.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I concur with all the comments earlier. And I, Scott, I can see, but I can't see behind the screen. I know you mentioned, yeah, Michelle, there she is, hello, good to see you both again. You know, 43 years ago, Susan, Burlington was comprised mostly of manufacturing, other industries that, you know, certainly a long day's gone by since Leahy came here. You've been instrumental in the growth of our economy here in Burlington. We now have clusters of tech, medical devices, life sciences, and that's, and that's because of Leahy Hospital and the important role you play here in our community. So I'm pleased to see that you're continuing to do things. You have the new emergency room, just a couple of years ago. You finally got that helipad that we've been looking for for two decades now. So there's always good things continue to come
Terrific.
from Leahy Hospital. I still can't get hospital on, I still wanna say clinic like everybody else does, but at any rate, we're certainly pleased that you're a part of our community and hope you plan on being so for years to come.
Look forward to the next 100 years, thank you.
Paul, did you wanna?
Sure, I just wanted to say that I look forward to working with Dr. Moffett Bruce and I'm really excited for everything. You touched a little bit upon it, Mike, but you know, Leahy is a huge economic generator here in town. They're our largest employer by far. I think we all know that those are jobs where people have to come to the office, so they're great for our local economy. And just the amount of life science and medical device companies that are in town located here just because Leahy is really off the charts. And again, our residents enjoy a world-class hospital facility within minutes of their home, which, you know, really can't be understated. And I just wanna say that I look forward to working with Dr. Moffett Bruce and I also, as everyone else did, I'd like to acknowledge our Scott Hartman and Michelle Snyder, our government relations folks over there, they work very closely with us on a weekly or a monthly basis and I couldn't be more pleased, they just treat us so well. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. Susan, I'll give you the final word.
No, just to thank everybody for allowing us to be here this evening. It's lovely to meet everybody. We look forward to, you know, a very bright and thoughtful future for the healthcare of this community. We're looking forward to our medical school opening and really the next generation of our, of our physicians and just grateful to be here every day. So thank you for supporting us and we will seek your guidance and your help in the, in the near future. Thank you. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. Good to see you all, good to see you all.
Thank you.
Good night, Scott. Item 192, we are going to get an update and have some discussion with our Girl Scouts. I see them, sort of see them behind that screen, we can do something about that screen, I can't see them back there. Hi, good to see you again.
Hello again.
Hello.
Good, good evening. We are Glenn McNamee and Magna Denage from Girl Scout Troop 6902, 23, and we recently hosted the Burlington's first-ever Culture Fest. The Burlington Culture Fest was something we were both interested in doing for our Silver Award. We wanted to showcase the diversity of Burlington with tables, activities, and displays of different countries and cultures. To understand what we were in for, we went to a Girl Scout cultural event in another town. It was like what we were planning. There were multiple scouts representing a cultural holiday or a country. We looked around at the tables to find activities and trifold posters with information. We had an activity ourselves where someone would use a passport and identify some countries at the event to earn a lollipop. Their event was a huge inspiration to us. The two of us teamed up with Kelly Lehman from Burlington Parks and Recreation Department. She was a huge help as well as an excellent guide to the structure of the community and we can't thank her enough for everything. We went to work listing out many different contacts to ask whether or not they wanted to take part in this. We also tried, started to draft emails to them and started to make flyers and translated them into three additional languages. We presented our idea to the Select Board and they approved of it gladly. Only a few of the contacts replied to the email we sent them and the translated flyers were working with our budget. We were worried, however we persisted. Ms. Lehman had taught us about, many things about making an event, including how it's not always a straight path. We continued to talk to the contacts that were interested in hosting a table. We appeared on the talk show that our troop leader hosts at BCAT. We distributed flyers and business cards during the Fourth of July Parade. Even if there were some discrepancies, we were able to make the event happen. The Culture Fest was a success. People representing Denmark, Judaism, India, Pakistan, Bulgaria, and Trinidad and Tobago all came with their beautiful stations. Ms. Lemon was, Ms. Lehman was there to help us manage the event. The Select Board also came for a bit and they loved what we had done. The fest itself was very active for the time it was there. In fact, it was estimated that around 300 people participated. We anticipate that the Parks and Recreation Department will be eventually taking over this event. We are currently acting as consultants, helping them make the Culture Fest annual. Soon, we will present our experience to the Recreation Committee with the information we have from the event. Hopefully, our leadership, resources and contacts, they will incorporate the event as part of their annual lineup. We have to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for their help, Ms. Lehman for her guidance, the Select Board for their support, and all the participants for joining. We couldn't have done this without them. The Burlington Culture Fest was something that brought the community together. We learned a lot from it, how the town works, how an event works, how, even how communication works. Sure, there were a few hard falls, but we flew ourselves up again and we successfully earned our Silver Award.
Oh, oh, oh. I'm sorry, you caught me peeking ahead, I'm looking ahead, sorry about that. We were all at that event. We hurried out of here after one of our meetings, the night of your event. We all went down there and we all, I think, were sort of awestruck by this incredible event that the you two young girls thought of, all by itself as a wonderful event. I've been thinking about it all summer. As a matter of fact, I think it would be a wonderful template for us to use, you know, going forward. Maybe something, maybe something we could do on a regular basis and, you know, in, as part of our efforts to address DDI that we continue to, you know, search for answers and how we're gonna move forward. But I think that's a great idea, I think it's something we may wanna continue maybe working a partnership with you in the future to maybe expand this and make it, make it an annual event. I was just, I was just blown away by the, the whole, the whole experience. So thank you, thank you very much for, for all the hard work and thoughtfulness that you put into that. So I'm gonna start down this end, Michael. Any comments or?
Yeah, really briefly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys did a really great job and the turnout was, was unbelievable. When we, when I walked up, I was so surprised at the crowd you had there. I mean, 300, almost 300 people are, 300 people is really, really great. I mean, that's almost what we had at the Beer Garden Thursday, so that's, that's really good. So great job, keep up the good work and thank you for the update. Congratulations on the Silver Star Award.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe? Yeah. What can I say, I thought it was fabulous. What I'd like to do is somehow get that map out in the front so that the people on the screen can see it to see where everyone that, yeah, that'd be great. You can put it right up here and see it. But all those red pins that are on the map is where everybody that was at that.
Turn it that way, quick.
Red ones are from who people attended the Culture Fest.
Yes.
And then the blue ones are those who stopped by during the celebration.
Okay. So if there's somehow BCAT can get that on there for the, for the red ones that we saw that night that we were all there, it was amazing where everybody was from originally, you know? And I thought that was a great idea. For you two to come up with this is fantastic and I agree with Mike 100%. I think it's something that we should look into for the next group, for the next group, for the next group that comes up as far as the Girl Scouts go because how else are we all gonna get to know each other? Small events like this that puts us all together in the same town, right? They always say it takes a village, so this is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies, first off, congratulations on your Silver Awards.
Thank you.
Well deserved. I can't, that cannot be overstated at all. Keep us posted with your conversations with the Rec Commission, the Rec Department, Kelly, and how that goes. As you're hearing from the board, we are interested in helping further this forward as a continual town event. So keep us posted how the Rec wants to handle that and let us know how we can help. Since you're consultants, that's something that you can absolutely do. This happened because of your determination, like, don't forget that, right? Like, don't, don't forget, like, yes, you came here and you talked to us and we, yes, you know, you had family, yes, you know, you, you had some. But it's because of the two of you and, you know, there's this like marketing phrase called stick-to-itiveness, right? You didn't let up, right? You pivoted at every turn when there was a problem and you held an event for the first time ever on a Monday night and 300 people came and that is fantastic. You exceeded expectations on every front and you should be proud of yourselves from here forward because you did that, right? Which means you can do anything that you want from here on forward. There's nothing stopping either of you. So just don't ever forget that, right? Because it's very easy to get in your own head about what you can and can't do in life. You did this. This is absolutely incredible and it cannot be understated. So congratulations again, keep your heads high. You did, you did great work, great work.
Thank you, thank you.
And Jim?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. The first event, or the first attempt at an event is always the most difficult and it gets easier and bigger from that point on. We've seen that in other events in town, just excel and exponentially grow over the years. When you were listing off the countries, this past weekend, my neighborhood, just my neighborhood, had a neighborhood cookout and there was Italian, Irish, Jamaican, Portuguese, Korean, and Indian food for my neighborhood. That shows you just how one neighborhood is diverse. And I know Burlington, all 26,000 of us are much more diverse, there's so many more of us that I think we can turn this, as the chairman said, into a big event, an annual event. And I think a great way might, of starting it, might, let's, let's try to put our heads together and make it a celebration during the 225th anniversary of Burlington. Let's make that today's, Burlington's culture today, 225 years later. So we could, trust me, I'll help you with it and I'm sure my colleagues will help you, but let's seize that moment and try to make next year a part of the 225th anniversary as Culture Fest, Burlington Culture Fest, or something like that. But we're here to support you and congratulations. Linda, thank you for all your guidance. It was an amazing event, it really was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank, thank you on behalf of the entire board. I appreciate you coming in and giving us an update tonight and look forward to seeing you again in the near future. Congratulations. Righty, item 193, citizens' time. Is there anybody in the room who wants to speak on citizens' time? Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah Colley, town meeting member for Precinct 7. I'm here tonight to speak about a vote held recently at a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Housing Authority Board. I've already reached out to some of you, and I really appreciate you all reaching out to me and taking the time to respond, so thank you for that. But I do feel the need to speak further on it. There were three candidates for a vacancy on the Housing Authority Board. One of the candidates is the current Housing Authority Executive Director for a nearby town, a board member for Mass Naro, has licenses with the Mass Certified Public Purchasing Office and the Department of Housing and Community Development, and has experience managing properties as well as a master's in public administration. This person received two votes and did not gain the seat. The seven votes for the prevailing candidate went to a person whose only qualifications made available or discussed at that meeting were that he has lived in town for many decades, was a retired Burlington firefighter, and has some extra time on his hands. This harkens back to a similar situation that happened in 2020, when there were two candidates for a vacancy on the Housing Authority Board, one with no direct housing experience and one with 10 years' experience at a housing research center and a wealth of knowledge in affordable and senior housing. The candidate with vastly more housing experience received only two votes. The other received six. I do not personally know or have any judgments on the character of any of these candidates, and I do understand that there are many factors to consider when voting, but I have to question the decision-making by our leadership. Are these two votes anomalies, or is this indicative of a pattern? Could good, high-qualified people are stepping up and saying they want to contribute, and they're being overlooked for well-connected friends? The message to future prospects is that unless you have the necessary access and connections in town, you'll be left behind for those that do, no matter how qualified or passionate you are. I ask the Select Board to do better at seizing these opportunities, to not only get experts in their fields to help our town, but also to promote engagement among the next generation of leaders with our local government. Those opportunities were missed with these two votes, and I am left wondering how many more were missed over the years and how many other qualified candidates will now choose not to step up for the next vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see a couple of hands online. Lynn, could you help me out with?
Martha should be on. Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Martha Duffield, and I reside in Precinct 3. I have lived here for over 13 years, and I'm engaged in support of Citizen. I came here to address the recent appointment to the Housing Authorities as the same as Ms. Colley. I will not repeat the same things that she said. However, I do think that from an objective observer's perspective, it seemed like there was one candidate who was much more qualified for this role based on the information that was publicly available. So, this kind of opaque process does not engender much faith in our leaders that they're going to support qualified candidates for appointments and for subcommittees. So, not only to Sarah's point, does it make future qualified leaders not want to step up and volunteer and participate in government, it also causes us to question our leaders' decision-making in the larger context of our community. So, the public deserves an explanation for why this candidate, while the qualified person was not appointed to the Housing Authority, not only do better, but then an explanation does need to be sent to everybody for why this decision was made. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Joseph is up next.
Joseph?
Yeah, hi. My name is Joseph Sapashnikov, and I'm a resident of Burlington. I was approved for fuel assistance through the Home Energy Assistance Program through Community Teamwork. And I spoke with Linda, who's a supervisor at Community Teamwork, and also Lyanna Pasalis at the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. They informed me that I am qualified to receive water bill assistance as well, but unfortunately, the town of Burlington does not have a contract for this. I am speaking to the Select Board because I would like to know why there isn't a contract for the Low-Income Housing Water Assistance Program. I feel like this would be beneficial for not only myself but for other residents of Burlington that need this benefit. I was told by Linda at Community Teamwork that many towns they service are part of this program. I greatly appreciate it if you can reconsider and are able to enter this contract. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Joseph.
Yep, thank you.
Is that next?
Hi, Sheri.
She might not be on yet.
Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Can, yes.
Thanks. Sheri Ellis, the town meeting member from Precinct 3. A couple of comments. First, I wanted to thank the Girl Scouts for the Culture Fest that happened, and I don't know if they're still there or not, but I certainly echo a lot of the comments and hope that it'll come back next year. It was a great event, so thank you for that. I also want to thank the former speakers Sarah and Martha for speaking up about the Housing Authority appointments and also the Housing Partnership and the pattern that seems to maybe happening. Part of this may be some confusion on people's parts of understanding the difference between the Housing Authority and Housing Partnership. And I think as the board that makes appointments to both of these, I'm requesting that you, at a future meeting, give a little explanation of both of those, something to the effect of the members, how many there are, their terms, what their responsibilities are, what the vacancies are. I see different things on websites of the town for the Housing Authority and also the Housing Authority website. There's conflicting information. I don't know what the vacancies are. I don't know what the term members are. So, it's very confusing to me, who understands a little bit about this, so I'm sure many others who don't have as much knowledge on this are even more confused. And I think it would be really beneficial for a lot of people if this board explained the differences between the Authority and the committee. So, thank you. I'll look forward to hearing from you about that.
Thank you, Sheri. Anybody else for Citizens Time? Don't see any. Lynn, anybody out there? Okay, all right. Thank you all. Item 194, approval of Wegmans One-Day Liquor Licenses. I see Jeff. Jeff's with us. Can you see him again?
I'll wait today.
Good, thank you. You have the floor.
All right. Looking for approval for the One-Day Beer Garden event at Wegmans Food Markets. We've been doing it all summer on Thursdays from Memorial Day through Labor Day, and then we're looking to extend that through the month of September. We're looking for the dates, the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th, and then the first Thursday in October, at which point we'll cease for the year. This Beer Garden takes place outside, just outside our cafe doors. It's a sectioned-off area. It's 100% proofing for anybody who comes. They have to show a license. They get a risk man. You know, we've been doing this for two years now responsibly, and are just looking for a few extra dates.
Paul or Lynn, you got any concerns, comments?
We've received no concerns, Mr. Chairman. Everything has gone according to plan at the previous Beer Garden, so all the paperwork is in order.
See that. Alcohol Subcommittee, any recommendations, comments, concerns?
No, I mean, this has been going on for a while now. There's been nothing positive for the town. There's been no issues with the police departments or underage, or someone trying to sneak in. So, I see no reason not to approve this at all. It's gonna go right through. Michael?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Joe. Yeah, no issue. These are well-run. Get two ounce pours. I mean, you get, it's all sectioned off, and I think they're great. I have no issue at all. They're going great, so.
That's ended it. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No issues with the Beer Garden at all, the One-Day Liquor Licenses. But while you're here, Jeff, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you and Wegmans for all you do for this community. Public Safety Night, Sculpture Park, Celebrate Burlington. If there's an event, Wegmans is there. So, you guys have been an unbelievable commercial neighbor, and trust me, as someone who's lived in this community a long time, you are part of this community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, always good to see you. Thanks for coming down. Just one question. How's the turnout at these things?
Pretty good. They're between 50 and 75 people right now.
That's great.
So, yeah, it's spend beneficial. It drives business to our store, and it's done great, so.
Awesome. Yeah, appreciate it. I have no issues. I'm happy to keep doing it. I was just curious. See, I was going.
Great, doing well.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, from Wegmans.
I'll make a motion to approve Wegmans One-Day Licenses for September 14th, 21st, 28th, and October 4th.
Second.
Hold on, a quick question. The agenda says 4th, but the paperwork backup says 5th. Just saw that.
The Thursday, the first Thursday in October.
I just saw that, so I-
Whatever that is.
The 5th, all right.
Your detective venue, spotting little discrepancies.
I'll amend my motion to approve Wegmans One-Day Liquor Licenses for September 14th, 21st, 28th, and October 5th.
Thank you. And the second was-
Now that the date's correct, I'll second that.
If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. There you go, my friend.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Take care.
Item 195, approval at AMC Theaters, extension of hours for special showing. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James. I'm the new general manager at the AMC. We are looking to extend the times that we can have guests in our building due to a Taylor Swift concert event on certain days. We're hoping to have guests in the building until 2:00 a.m. from October 13th through the 15th, October 19th through the 22nd, October 26th through the 29th, October 31st, and then November 2nd through the 5th.
Okay, I don't see any comments from the Police Department and our backup. Were there any, Lynn?
No, so James is new, so we decided to wait until they came before we reached out to David Outerbridge. We will notify him. They've never had a problem in the past. They've always worked with AMC, so we just figured we'd settle it after.
Okay. Paul, anything you had?
No, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, the board has approved these a bunch of times over the years for various movies and whatnot, so we have no complaints and no issues noted during those times of dates, so.
Okay. Got a few dates here. Must have a lot of Swifties in there.
Yeah, it's very popular.
Does the board have any questions from the board? Anybody? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I always forget this. Nothing's gonna change with the alcohol serving hours, right?
No, the alcohol serving would stay the same, correct.
No, yeah, no issue.
Even our general operation would stay the same, where like the, our ticket sales would stop at the same time as normal. It's just that because of the length of the concert event, it goes longer than what we would normally have.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Joe, did you have? No, good.
Just one quick question, one just thought. We're October 31st, Halloween. You may want to just add extra personnel or a second detail or something, just because it's Halloween.
Yeah, we can. We haven't even decided if we're going to be open that late that day, but it is a day that we have the event, so it's something we'll decide going forward if we may even need that day, but just in case we decide to have the later shows.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, James, you know, you've got a great history over there with us, so I'm not hearing any concerns.
One more, Mr. Chairman, follow-up. Do you know how long the film is? Is that why-
It's running about three hours.
Okay, so you're gonna have multiple showings, and it's gonna run late?
Yes.
That's it.
So, pick your date, Mike, and block your three hours.
Yeah, I'll be there. I'll be there every night. I'm a Big 50.
After the Beer Garden. Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to approve the request of extension of hours for the AMC Theater.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve AMC extension of hours October 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, 21st, 22nd, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 31st, and November's 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Second. Go ahead, Michael. Second from Joe. Anything further? Being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. All right, James, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, you're welcome. Item 196, approval, a new livery license. Guys, you could have, there was some additional backup. I don't know, just a little hand it out just for the meeting.
Hi, Mr. President. Good evening, dear board members. My name is Mehmet Kaye, and I'm here actually to, for the license for the livery company. I own, I am the owner of Alpro Limo. In order for me to take the clients back and forth to the airports, we need business certificate, and that's why I'm here actually. And the mass port is requiring this document. I live across the street, 619 Farms Drive, and I have only one vehicle, and I already have all the documents. I believe you have it in your files?
Yeah, yeah, they have everything.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Gentlemen, questions?
I'll go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't-
Sorry, I wasn't raising my hand high enough.
That's right, yeah. I'm sitting way down. You can get it up there.
Did I get my arm elevated? What type of vehicle is it?
I have 2023 Chevy Suburban SUV.
Okay, all right. It'll be parked at the location, at the address listed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Yeah? Anything further?
Quick comment.
Sure.
Just a quick comment. This is just a one-car operation. It's from your house. You have to have a place of business address, is what you're saying to us, right? That's what I'm saying. So, I really don't see any problems with this at all. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a thing we need to discuss for between a half hours, but it's, he's just trying to run a business out of his place, and by us helping him out with this, I think it's the best way to go.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I just had one question. Do you have experience in this, in the business?
Yes, I've been in this business for a long time, yes.
Okay.
I worked for somebody, so now I just buy my own vehicle.
Okay.
Recently, just like, I'm brand new for being my own boss, you know, my own company.
So, this is something a little bit different than Lyft or Uber or-
Yes, it's more professional, I would say, yes.
Yeah, we've seen a few of these recently. There's nothing further. Entertain a motion to approve the request for a new livery license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a new motion to approve the new livery license being requested from Alpro Limo LLC at 619 Farms Drive.
Thank you very much.
Motion, and a second from Michael. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Your wife's smiling. Get any bigger down there. My God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just about on time.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Item 197 is a public hearing, a request for no parking signs on Rosario Way. Now, the public hearing notice has been published online and in various media outlets in our area. I would declare the public hearing open and request that the approval from the board for the accuracy of the notice.
So moved.
Get that right? Sound good?
Second.
Okay. Move in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. All right, who is the applicant? All right, when you want to come on up and introduce yourselves and-
He's my neighbor. I'm the applicant.
Bring it, you. We got two chairs up there. If you'd like to join, a little moral support never hurts.
Everyone could just sign it, please. Sure, thank you. Just name? I'm the applicant, K-Dasher. Hi, everybody. So, just describe.
Yes, please, John.
Yeah, sure. So, I've been- So I've been living at Two Rosario Way. It's the house that you first encounter when turning onto Rosario Way from Francis Wyman Road. I've been there for seven years, and I have, when I, there's a, a strip of the cul-de-sac that is sort of the neck of it, you know, coming off of Francis Wyman, that's, that abuts my, my driveway. And then it opens up into the big cul-de-sac after that. So over the course of seven years, I've encountered what I believe is a dangerous situation when people park along the neck. So there's a stop sign at the, you know, at the end, and then there's a fire hydrant, but there's a little stretch where it's legal to park. But what happens is, in my opinion, it creates a dangerous, sort of one lane ingress-outgress situation. And given the speeds of Francis Wyman Road, you know, at a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, I think that, you know, and when people come onto it from turning in front of oncoming onto the street, they're focusing on oncoming, you know, and so they're coming in at high speed, and if you have people parking, and also it's a granite edge, so you cannot park off the lane, you really take up the whole lane if you park there. So you create a little, you know, ingress-outgress lane with people coming in from Francis Wyman, and the danger that someone could be trying to get around the car that's parked and potentially have a head-on collision. So, and it's difficult to ask people to move because it seems like folks from, you know, the broader community sometimes park there. So it's just from my experience, I feel it creates a dangerous situation. And we have a couple of new drivers on our cul-de-sac, you know, college age, and also some older citizens that may not have the experience and response time to deal with.
Like me?
I'm getting up there too, so I'm, I'm putting myself there. But, yeah, I just, yeah, I feel like it would be just for that part of the neck to have a no parking, not the broader street or cul-de-sac.
I understand. Yeah, we've actually, we've seen some of the correspondents back and forth between yourself, some of our traffic folks in town, so we've had an opportunity to review this.
Oh, great.
Prior to the scene. First of all, what I did want, while I got you here. I wanted to say, I wanted, I just wanted, while I have you here, I wanted to thank you for your, all the effort and work that you put in on that crosswalk.
Thank you.
Situation, the tragic situation we had there a year ago, so I want to applaud you for those, for those efforts while you're here tonight.
And it looks great.
Goodness. Before I open it up to public, let me, any couple of opening questions or concerns from the board? Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey Kate, how are you?
Hi.
I have a quick question, how often does it happen where there's so many people parking there that it causes a problems? Does it often occurrence, is it once in a while?
It's not often, no. Yeah, it's, it's infrequent. Sometimes it's a neighbor, I have talked to them, you know, and sometimes I have the opportunity to talk to the people that are parking, I'll see them there, say for a party, but sometimes it's, I don't know, you know, and I don't have the opportunity to speak to the person parking.
And, and they go on both sides, and that's what causes the?
No, actually, interestingly, so they, just the neck portion going, feeding on to Francis Wyman, nobody ever parks on my side of it, you know, where my home is. I think it's really clear that that's unsafe because it's a short distance, you know, and people need to be able to come in.
And the hydrant's on that side, right?
No, it's the other side. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So nobody ever parks on my side, it's a very short stretch to come from Francis Wyman into my driveway. So that's not a problem, it's the other side. So folks will, will, I think it's like thirty feet from a stop sign, something like that, you know, that you have to park by law. So they'll park right in front of my driveway. So my only option is to back up into, you know, the oncoming lane, right? So I'm backing up here, they're here, and so I'm facing the potential of someone coming swinging in, you know, not really being able to have visibility maybe from the car and whatnot, you know, off of Francis Wyman when someone's there. Or they're, you know, similarly, someone could be trying to get around them, and, and then there's only twenty or so feet, you know, off of Francis Wyman, twenty or thirty feet that, that you can maneuver. So it's really a combination of the, a lot that's going on there and the speed.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to wait till I hear from the board, if there's anybody else in there. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only opinion is I think this is similar to what we had at B Street, where parking on one side caused cars to come toward each other. And we, at that time, believed it was a safety hazard, and anytime two vehicles head toward each other in the opposite directions, to me, that is a safety issue, so. I think, in this case, I mean, I know it's not a big area, but to avoid having two people come together head on or facing each other, because even if there's not a crash, one of them has to back up. That's just how I see it.
All right, Jim. All right. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on this item? I thought so. Yep, you can actually, if you want to sit there, just slide that microphone a little closer to you.
All right, slide that microphone. My name is Karen Cooper, and I live on Francis Wyman Road at the corner of Juniper. I really don't want to start putting no parking signs on streets with three houses on the side street that my house is on. It's been prom night, and people have parked on both sides, people have even parked in my driveway. I don't care, it's the sort of thing, party thing, it's over in a few hours. And I really can't see putting up no parking signs. Where are people going to park if you don't want them in front of your house, and you don't want them to your driveway, and, you know? I think the motor vehicle laws say you can't park within so many feet of a corner anyway. I just think this is overkill. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Karen. Is there anyone online? I don't. Don't see anybody online for this. You know, I, I can't help but think, I, this, this situation is making me recall it was another cul-de-sac in town who having problems access, egress issues. And it was because when the subdivision was approved, they told them that they had to have this, you know, certain granite and other things and green space and everything else in, you know, in order to get permitted. It sounds like you may have a similar situation here that if we could remove that impediment, it sounds like it runs right down the middle of the Rosario Way, probably solved the, at least solved the problem of your concerns of people entering and other cars not being able to screen between a parked car and then this, this impediment here. I would, that would be a preferred method for me, as far as I'm concerned. Again, given the infrequency of the parking issue, and I think, I would, I would agree with Karen that here we would be sort of setting a precedent for other areas of town who, who may prefer to have no parking sides and areas. Now, we have done it in a couple of areas where there's, where there's a lot of heavy business volume, you know, particularly down in Windmere, and then we had another issue on B Street recently. On Rosario, obviously, in that stretch of Francis Wyman Road, there's, there's, there's no businesses in the immediate area, no schools or playgrounds that I'm aware of that would, you know, having people park on Rosario on a, on a regular basis. I'd be inclined to try and find other solutions to the problem, it doesn't seem like a, an urgent matter to me. Maybe we could work with the planning board or the DPW to maybe eliminating that impediment that you, you speak of, may, may be able to resolve that issue when everyone's make everybody, make someone.
Yeah, I, so definitely, so for example, when I have had the opportunity to talk to the people parking, you know, we just ask them to move up the cul-de-sac because there's a huge cul-de-sac. So we don't have, my neighbor and I were talking about that, you know, we don't have a big issue with parking everywhere else. It's, and there's a lot, it's, it's just a little curve, that's probably the reason they don't, is the curvature. Because like I said, on the, in the incoming, nobody, like intuitively, I think people know, there's, that's not safe. But if you think about it, if that's true, they don't want to park there, but if you close off this one, you know, that, that's kind of, I think, the next step that worries me is just that when that happens, and there's just a ton of space in the cul-de-sac, so I think if there, I think why it's not an issue in most, you know, homes along Rosario, or, you know, it's, you have some give on the curb, you know, you have grass or, you know, some of these, you know, where it's more of a rolled, but this is the type that'll pop your tires kind of thing, you know? Which I've done in Burlington before, you know, but, so you're literally not out of the lane at all when you park there. You know, so I think that, you know, so that's how we've solved it before, just like, hey, you know, do you mind just moving your car up here, we're fine with the party, whatever, you know, it's a public street. It's just not right there, in, you know, right at the neck of it, so.
All right. Again, I'm, I'm not sure that it warrants signage beyond my personal opinion, but I'll leave it up to the, to the board. Joey?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rosario Way, I've been down there a couple of times. A couple of years ago, we had an incident down there with hockey nets in the street. We took care of that problem. Like Mr. Chairman here has, has said a couple of times, we've had different instances down with the B Street and behind Sammy's, and across the street from Sammy's, and we're getting to a point where we're putting up no parking signs, you can't park here, you can't park there. It's getting to a point where this particular incident, I, I don't know, and I can't be positive. I know there's a couple neighbors up there that just don't like each other, and I don't know who they are. All right, I don't know who they are, and I know they just don't like each other. So this is, seems to be like one of those incidents, and, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm not saying anything like that, but this is a neighborhood issue. This isn't, this isn't like Mr. Teague is going up there and parking on the street and leaving his car there all day long. And I, I would say ninety percent of those cars, wherever they are, they are coming in from that neighborhood, those three, those three houses. So I'm kind of inclined to believe that someone's not getting along up there. And it doesn't become our responsibility to throw up no parking signs every time someone doesn't get along. That's my issue. Mr. Denizio, can I, can I pull that up real quick? If you, if you have it? There's Rosario Way. There it is. So you're saying that they're parking on, looking at it at the bottom, on the bottom?
Correct, yep, just that section right there.
You live across the street from that.
Correct, so that's my, yep, and so right behind there, yeah, from there and then going towards Rosario, that's the only stretch I'm concerned.
They're going from, say, the, the top part of your driveway where the arrow is, back, that's where they're parking, or they're parking right, right across the street from your driveway.
Across the street.
Across the street from the driveway. So that's someone that's trying to aggravate you. I'm just being honest, I, I can't be any more honest. That's someone that's trying to aggravate you. For some other reason, I don't know why, but the house on the top, on the bottom, closest to the trees, that's where the hockey nets used to be. Now they're gone because those kids are older now and they've moved on, now they have cars. So now they're going to try to aggravate with that. And I just can't see putting a no parking sign there because the neighborhood's not getting along. We turned down a guy for no parking, no stop sign about, what, a year ago? Right, and he was very upset with us, but there was no call for it, for us to do that. If there's an issue with you can't get out of your driveway, that's why we have a police department. I don't want to see you call a police department every time, but if that's what you have to do, that's what you have to do. But as far as I'm concerned, I don't believe that this is precedent to set up a no parking sign for every other thing that's going to come in front of us after this. So that's my view on this. And thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Denizio.
Thank you. Do we know if engineering's looked at this at all?
Uh, yes. Engineering and also the police traffic division don't believe that the signs are necessary, which is why we're here.
My small question is can we see if engineering can try to find an alternative of removing maybe the granite, or see if they have any other suggestions before we take action? In other words, continue to hearing, have engineering look at it, and, or is that, or you think they've already done that?
I think they've gone through it pretty thoroughly.
All right, never mind, disregard.
So it, it sounds like an option though, just to understand, is I could call the police? I mean, if, if, because sometimes I honestly don't know who these people are.
Of course you call the police.
Okay.
I mean, if you, if you can't get out of your driveway, I, you'd have every right to
Yes.
Pick up the phone and ask the police to help you out.
Yeah, no, I, I can get out, it's, it's more the danger of what it sets up, you know, for everybody coming in and out. You know, with young drivers and, and so on and so forth, I just worry about, you know, if it's just one, and then say somebody's trying to, you know, they're looking at oncoming and they come in this way at a high rate of speed, and somebody's trying to come out, that's really it. So I, I don't, you know, if the police are able to locate the person and, you know, ask them to move or whatever, because I don't feel that there's any law they're breaking that I can say, except that, do you mind moving up the cul-de-sac?
Mr. Chairman, time, man.
Let me, let me, Joey, I have a follow-up, I'll get right back.
So let me, Mr. Spel asked this earlier. So during the course of a day, how long is that car sitting there? Is it every day? Is it from eight in the morning till three in the afternoon? Is it for an hour? Is it for ten minutes? Is it for, is it? A time factor, give me some time for a time factor for this.
Yeah, it's several times a year, and I, I really don't know because, for example, I work at home often, and, and it's just when I'm coming in and out, if I happen to see a car. Sometimes I think it's maybe workers nearby that need to park somewhere, or I really don't know what the situat- and I don't always think it's our nee-, I really don't know who they are, like a couple times a year, it might be my neighbor, but often I can hear it's a party and I go over and we resolve it. So there's really no bad feelings with my neighbor, it's sometimes there's someone.
Don't take that wrong, I didn't say you at all. And I, I meant, I put that out there right in the beginning.
Yeah, you don't know, yeah.
I wasn't saying that whatsoever, but that's usually what the case is.
Right.
Somebody doesn't like each other and they're just going to go, I'm parking there.
Yeah.
Aggravate it. I get my mother lives in Winchester, the same thing happens down there.
Yeah.
And she lives across the ball field, a guy parks right behind her driveway.
Yeah.
What am I going to do? What can I do about it?
So there's, so a good example is like, on the other side of my home, along Rosario Way, there's actually a carve-out. So you know, sometimes electrical folks or somebody needs a place to park, and they park there, and I'll cut the weeds and everything, you know? So there's a need in that area for people to park, I think, and so that, you know.
What you had said, several times a year?
Yes.
A year? What's several times a year? Five, six, seven?
Yeah, about half a dozen, yeah.
So half a dozen times is inconvenient? Out of, out of, out of twelve months?
Yeah, no, I, it's, it's, again, it's not, to me, it's not an inconvenience, I mean, I, I can get around them, it's the danger.
Oh, great, thank you.
Obviously, it's, it's the danger. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, first off, thank you for being solutions oriented, like I appreciate when people come before us for things like this, sometimes they're like, this is the thing that I want, and other options aren't necessarily available. I also want to use this opportunity to say like, and this is for anyone who ever sees this, you know, the non-emergency line for the police department is there for reasons exactly like this, right? If you feel like people are parking too close to the intersection, right, which I'm pretty sure law dictates that they'd be at least twenty feet back from the intersection, then that's an absolute reason for, to call, right, and the police will come, they'll run the plates, they'll see if they can ID the person and ask them to move, right, because that's creating that hazard that you're talking about, right? People who are trying to exit can't move to the right to allow people coming in enough space on their proper side of the road, right? It's funny, because yesterday I was crossing town, I live over off of sixty-two, I was heading to Mill Street, so I was going the back way, and I went down Woodhill like I always do, and someone was having a party on Woodhill, right, so half the road is lined with cars. Thankfully, they were all parked the right way, right, because sometimes you turn around, cars are faced on the wrong side of the road, facing the wrong way. But I'm now traveling down what's essentially a one-lane road, right? And if someone's coming at me, now we have to decide how we're going to get around each other, right? I think that situation exists a lot throughout Burlington, and we don't typically see it, right? Here, I mean. And it's, it's one of those things that we just have to kind of navigate as a community, right? Cause we, if we say yes to no parking on Rosario, that means everyone from Woodhill to Jonathan to all the roads down off of, uh, Skelton, right? All those roads are nice and narrow, are going to be looking for no parking signs too. And now we've got a problem on our hands, right? So I would absolutely say that the police are here at your discretion if you feel like it's becoming a problem or a safety issue, right? If it becomes persistent, then a whole other conversation needs to take place, right? But it's funny because I, I pulled up the map before Mr. Denizio had it up on the big screen here. And my first thought was, wow, your neighbors have nice, long driveways.
Yes.
Right? Boy, I would, I would kill for a driveway that long.
In middle of January, you're on.
Yeah, I know.
You know, but for hosting events, right? You can get a solid number of cars in those driveways, right?
A lot of space, yeah.
There is. I think at this particular time, until there's a bigger case or context for no parking signs, I would say utilize the police department, see where they're at. And if it becomes a bigger problem, more consistent problem, or it's a continual offender, uh, maybe that, that could be done. But for now, I have to say that it probably doesn't warrant the signs and we just manage it for now. And I, I know it's not what you wanted to hear, but I'm hoping that we can, we can work on, you know, getting some more data moving forward.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Is there, is there anybody else in the room or online that, uh, would like to comment on, on this application? You're being done, um.
Motion to close the public.
Thank you.
Here.
Motion from Joe to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so let's.
Do you want to vote on this?
Summary, um, Karen, Karen. I'm sorry, it's not Karen. Kate, Kate, I'm sorry. But before you go.
Yes.
Would, would you consider, would you consider withdrawing your, without prejudice, without prejudice, your request this evening? So that we can have an opportunity to continue to, rather than give you an up or down tonight, and I, I get a hunch, I know which direction it's going, but I can offer you the opportunity to withdraw your request tonight for the side without prejudice and will allow you an opportunity to continue to try and find a solution. And that you'd still have the right to come back again if you still feel as strongly as you do.
Yeah, I withdraw it without prejudice, yes.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't want, I don't want to.
No, I didn't think of that option. So I appreciate it, yeah. No, I think it's, you know, um, as you know, safety is first, so, you know, to be able to continue talking about it. And, and I've also seen other properties that are somewhat similar, but, you know, I don't, I don't think they present the same configuration. So I don't think it's, you know what I mean? I think it's just a really unique configuration.
You know, there may be an opportunity, if you get some, some dialogue going with, we've got some great people in our engineering department, maybe something as simple as some, maybe some yellow paint on a curb or something like that, just as a, just to, to maybe dissuade folks from
Yeah.
meaning there's no parking.
That's a great idea, yeah.
I don't know, I'm just trying to, I'd like to try and find a meeting in the mine or something in the middle rather than.
Then setting a precedent, yes. No, like for example, you know, I think of when you say that, um, when it says, you know, like dangerous intersection or something. You know, like if someone's parking there, they may not think of all these factors, right? They're new, you could say like, you know, dangerous area to park or, I don't know. Like you said, talk to them about it and just see if there's a middle ground that alerts. Cause I'm sure they don't want to cause harm either, you know? But just something that might say, hmm, this, maybe try parking up the street, you know, uh, yeah.
I think, I think it'd be, I think it'd be worth a try.
Yeah.
Michael had a follow-up.
One real class, and please let us know if, um, it doesn't work, if you call. And I think maybe it's someone who doesn't realize that they're, they're causing a, it could be someone who just doesn't even realize they're causing a dangerous situation.
Right.
And, you know, if I were to ask by a police officer to move my car, I would be mindful in the future to move it to a safer area. But we do want to help and we, we do hear you and, but we want to know if it doesn't work out because we want to continue to help find a solution for you.
Yeah, no, that sounds great. And maybe there is a middle ground. Again, it, it is very infrequently, I mean, point rightly taken, um, it's, but it just takes once, right? So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Um, but yeah, if there's a way to put yellow paint or something there that just says, you know, maybe not the best place to park, you know?
Yeah, we'd like to help you find a solution and find a solution for everyone, so please keep us posted.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Kate.
And do you, do you recommend I reach out to, uh, who would I, traffic or?
Tom, Tom Hayes at, at our engineering department and maybe, maybe he has some ideas that will dissolve everybody's satisfaction.
That sounds great.
All right, nice to meet you.
All right, and do you need me to email or is this enough, the withdrawal?
No.
No, that, okay, this is, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Item 198 approval, Saheli event in the town common. Hello there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dipali Gulati. I am the senior manager for community outreach and training and prevention at Saheli. Saheli is a domestic violence, uh, organization in Burlington. The home has been for past 27 years. We help immigrant women, uh, from South Asia, Middle East, North, or Arabic speaking countries in North Africa with wraparound services in, um, providing legal help, mental health and housing. Domestic violence has, um, is a public crisis. In the last nine months, Saheli has already helped 290 clients and over 300 kids. In 2023, which is not over yet, about 33.9% of women and 33.7% of men face domestic violence in just Massachusetts. And according to Massachusetts Commission on Probation, 43,000 children are exposed to domestic violence each year. Like I said, it's a public crisis. Just in July this year, we lost Nancy Hansen in Newton, who was killed by her husband within 48 hours for filing, before filing for a restraining order. In August, 20-year-old Nayli Nevis in Salem was killed by her boyfriend, which not able to keep, take care of her own children. So I'm here to have two requests for the month of October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, across the country and state, there are various initiatives that are carried on to raise awareness against domestic violence. So my two requests are, first one is to give us permission to host our third annual Domestic Violence Awareness Walk on October 28th from 9:00 AM to 12:00. We usually walk from the town common and the 5K walk, permission is given us by the police. The route is organized, given to us and we have police details. And the second request is very symbolic. It's never been done in Burlington, so I would really request to consider this. Is to illuminate the town hall in colored purple with purple lights. Why purple? Purple is the color of domestic violence. It symbolizes courage, survival and honor. These lights would send a powerful message and increase visibility by providing a very tangible way of showing solidarity with survivors and a commitment by the town of Burlington to end domestic violence. When people see these lights, it will promote a conversation, raise awareness about the issue and inspire other organizations to join. It will help local residents or other organizations and businesses to get engaged and foster a sense of community and commitment to end domestic violence. And most importantly, it'll inspire individuals to take action when they see the visual impact. Finally, it will honor the victims of domestic violence, which I'm sure we've had quite a few in Burlington as well, especially who has lost their lives as a result of abuse. It's a way to honor their memory and ensure their stories are not forgotten. So I'm requesting this to make it an annual tradition to light up the town hall and maybe even the gazebo with purple lights and let the whole state know that Burlington stands against domestic violence.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Dipali. Uh, gentlemen, chairman, start on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've actually, in my years with the police department, worked closely with Saheli on, on several, uh, instances.
And you were our guest of honor on our first walk in 2021.
So I completely support everything you do. It's, it's again, it's one of those things that people don't want to talk about. And Saheli's an organization that if you know about them, either helping someone or you're a victim. And a lot of people don't know about it, but I think this is a great idea. One quick question though. In the past, have you lit, uh, lit the town hall purple or whether it's that the trees on the common?
So we've always had the tree, but this year, uh, we want to make a bigger impact and see if the town hall can be lit purple. I'm, not the tree, but the town hall and the gazebo. So the, the, the visual impact is bigger because people can see it from far away, driving by and have, have that conversation. Why is this place lit in purple?
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question, Mr. Segura, you know then, has any logistic issues with that?
Uh, we would have to look into it, Mr. Chairman. I think clearly, I mean, lighting the gazebo with purple lights, that doesn't seem too complicated. But, um, I do believe that there, there probably is, uh, they put those little, uh, plastic things over the lights. Filters to change the color, so I think that we can certainly look into that. Um, I would just ask the board to be specific on, on what date you, you want that to happen, uh, between, is it the entire month or is it?
If it's possible, it'll be entire month. Our walk is on the 28th of October. So, and Domestic Violence Month starts first. So if it's possible, then we would request for the whole month. There are other towns like Vela and Sudbury, they also do the same thing and they light up their town hall for, for the whole month.
And a quick follow-up?
Yeah.
Where do the lights come from? Who provides the light?
The town of Burlington.
I think we'd just be altering our own lights, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be the, the plan is to sort of, uh, put those plastic filters.
That was, that's, do we have plastic filters, in other words?
Uh, I'm not sure if we have them, but I do believe that, that we can probably track them down. So I'd have to look into that.
Thank you. And thank you all for, for all that Saheli does.
Thank you so much.
Stay down this end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this brief because I, I believe this board supports everything that you do in, in full, 100% honesty and honesty. Yeah, those numbers are way too high. Way too high. And anything we can do to, to get the word out, you know? I mean, if, if tracking down some, some non-flammable plastic filters for the lights, getting the common and the town hall lit up and allowing you guys to do a walk is all we're doing? Then that's, I mean, yes. From my 110% yes, what else can we do? You know? Let us know how else we can help.
Definitely, thank you so much.
People, people don't deserve to suffer in silence like that. They do not deserve people to, because somebody's mad or for what, I mean, it's not, I could go on a rant.
In fact, we are going to, uh, Saheli is going to, uh, the State House tomorrow to, um, in fact, I'm giving a testimony for the two bills that have been introduced by a couple of state representatives against coercive control and court litigation. So I'm testifying tomorrow, um, at the State House against this, um, like I said, a public crisis, which is just unheard. People, it's, it's, nobody talks about it. And in July, I went for a vigilance, uh, to Newton for, uh, a 46-year-old woman who was just battered by her husband with a baseball bat in front of her three kids. So it's, it's very sad.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all you do with Saheli. It's a great organization and, uh, I think we've all kind of seen the impacts of domestic violence and, um, probably everyone knows someone who's been impacted by it and it's, it's a very ugly, ugly situation all the time. I'm in full support of everything you've asked for. I think that's a great idea to light up the gazebo and the town hall in purple. And, uh, I hope we can make it happen.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Just thank you for everything you do. It's a very touching, um, it's terrible. It's absolutely terrible what people do to people. I'm not going to say anything, I'll just get emotional. Just thank you for everything, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, I, I'm trying to think, haven't we lit up the, the lamps in past years in purple for this event? The lamp posts out there on the common?
No, but the, the lamp posts have been lit, uh, at various.
Have there been different colors for different?
Yes.
Recognize different things from time to time, correct?
Yes.
Maybe it was blue or, I know there's been different.
Blue and green, yep.
Is anybody using the lamp post or we know of that for the month of October? Do we have, are we committed to, to any other organizations for the lamps?
We'd have to check just to see, um, if, if anything coincides with those dates again that we did last year. To remember the green for, uh, youth mental health.
Right, right.
Blue for autism.
Blue for autism, so.
That's what it was, okay.
We'd have to check on, check on those.
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with lighting up the building, town hall, quite honest with you. My, my concern is that, um, you know, other, other groups, not that there's anything wrong with other groups, but now if we can get into a, into a situation, we may not necessarily want to, want to find ourselves in lighting up our municipal buildings. I think we're kind of actually pushing our luck from time to time when we even do the items on the common. The gazebo and, and lamp posts, I'm okay with. I would be opposed to lighting any municipal building, especially for an entire month. If it was for the, for the night of your 5K or something, I'd probably be okay with that. I think that's my opinion on this. I'm, I'm fine with the 5K and I, I prefer we found an alternative to lighting up the building for the month of October.
Gazebo is fine, we'll take the gazebo for now. We can do that.
I'm offering, I'm offering you the gazebo and all the, all the lamps out there, um, very easy.
We'll, we'll take that. Would, would we be given permission to put up a sign saying, uh, something like, uh, of no to domestic violence? We won't put.
And on the, on the day of your events?
Okay.
You could, but you couldn't, we wouldn't allow for
For the whole month.
signage on the common for the whole month. We've, we've, we've had other requests for that. We've, we've had to say no to numerous requests like that.
Only had a message board signed somewhere on the common.
Yeah.
That would be something.
That would be nice.
That'd be a good idea to look into.
Sorry, there's some salt in the world for that one.
Amongst us, us, however, myself.
Um, I, I don't know how to.
So you're proposing the, the common and the, and the gazebo for the month of October with the potential of the 28th? Maybe we get like the sconces on the outside purple on the building?
I'd be okay for the, for the day.
For the day, for the one day. For the one day.
I can't, I can't agree with them more on that.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
Along, along with a sign for the one day.
The one day with the signs, one day with the, with the municipal buildings and then the month with the lights on the, uh,
The lamp posts and the gazebo. And around the gazebo.
I think it's a good start and if we like it, maybe next year we'll do more.
Appreciate it, really appreciate it.
Kind of, we, we, is there any agreement on?
Yeah.
All right, all right. So, all right, I have a motion to that effect.
I'll, I'll make that motion. I'll say that we're going to do the common and the gazebo, uh, purple for the month of October with the town hall, uh, outside exterior lights, purple for the 28th, sign on the 28th and the 5K on the 28th.
Thank you.
We're going to vote on it.
I'm just excited.
Did you mention the lamp posts, are we doing that?
Yeah.
I'll second Mr. Priest's motion.
Your motion in a second. Anything further, gentlemen? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I invite you to come and walk with us on the 28th.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to see you again.
I'll be there for one mile. As long as it don't it afterwards.
I mentioned it's a vendor. I mentioned there's a vendor. There will be a vendor there. Take care of that. Read throughs you have. Item, item one ninety-nine, we need a discussion on our alcohol policy. Uh, who would like to start? Well, you look like you have something to add there.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we just wanted to put this draft in front of the board one last time. Uh, we'd like to bring it back on the twenty-fifth. Have the board formally approve the policy and make it our alcohol policy. So, um, we just put it on here to just encourage you guys to give it one final read-through. You know, there are some formatting things that have been pointed out to us that we're gonna try to just update the numbering system on. And I'm gonna ask if we can get away from Roman numerals, because I like regular numbers better myself. But, um, at the same time, um, like I say, we'd like to get this formally voted um, at a, at a, at a board meeting at the end of September. So, I know we spent a significant amount of time on. We've gotten some great feedback. We had a session with town council. We had a lot of questions answered at that time. So, um, anything you guys come up with that you want to talk about, uh, if we could just get that information sooner rather than later so we can get your questions answered and have it ready for you on the twenty-fifth.
I don't know if the twenty-fifth is gonna be doable, but let's see, based on the feedback we get. So, you want us to submit those requests to Lynn?
Yes.
Some of the changes we might like to see or some of the revisions to the policy that you, the draft policy. Uh, I know the subcommittee has been meeting. Um, why don't we CC the subcommittee on any?
No, just go through Lynn.
Just through Lynn, okay.
We went through the policy line by line with town council. And anything that even maybe seemed confusing was very clear after conversation with her, so.
I mean, because there are two things that I've been laser-focused on, as you know, Sunday hours and the, um, some sort of, uh, limit to the lengths of when we do have a suspension. Now, I didn't see either one of those addressed in the draft. You know, uh, I'd like to, you know, have like something to expunge those previous, um, suspensions after, you know, certain, certain amount of years. Whatever that number is, I don't know. Two, three, five. I don't know, but those are the couple of things that I was kind of hung up on. Rather than email them to your, should I just tell them about it tonight?
Write that down.
Yep.
I didn't see them. I didn't see either of those addressed in the drafts. They're probably in there. I just didn't see it. I just didn't see them.
So on the Sunday hours, it was discussed with town council. The subcommittee, Paul, Kim, all that were involved in that meeting. Um, we did change the weekday hours. And the, at the time, the subcommittee was hoping to stay with the six o'clock, but they were not opposed to some discussion. Correct.
Yep. So we can, we can set that issue aside. It's something to be discussed on when the board is ready to vote this and debate that.
Okay.
At that time.
Fair enough.
And then if you want to go back and just read, um, I don't know, Roman numerals. This, it's page twenty-one. Service of suspension orders. It's a lot less specific. It's more up to you all to make a decision now.
Oh.
So you can kind of review that, see if there's something in there that you like or don't like. And we can, we can alter it. But it's much different than what you had previous.
It's not the, it's not set aside. We got some depression there, depending on the severity of the.
Yes, we talked about, we talked about that.
Joe did not like that, so that was why the whole discussion started.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we, yeah, we need some more. Get on that, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I've been thinking about one issue I have with it is the BYOB permit thing. In my opinion, I just think we should scratch that whole section out and say that they are not allowed in the town of Burlington. Um.
Well, I think what town council says, they are allowed, whether we have a policy or not. So the trick would be to have a policy and then a BYOB establishment would have some rules and regulations to follow. But in the absence of a policy, it would still be allowed.
Even if we say they're not allowed in our alcohol policy?
I mean, we could follow up with that.
Yeah, we will follow up, but that's how I understood it.
Because all this like verbiage in here, I think it encourages it. And I think Burlington, even though I think it's cool to kind of be able to bring a bottle of wine or some beer to a restaurant, I don't think that's what we have going on in our town. And I think it, it, I think it, our, to protect our restaurants and businesses, I don't even want to open the idea of having that available. They pay a lot of money for these liquor licenses. They do a lot of work getting tip certified. We do a lot of work with our certifications. Police does all the checks. I just don't even want it to be an option. So if there's any way to even say there are no BYOB permits, um, uh, alcohol serving in the town is allowed in the town of Burlington, um, I would prefer that than kind of putting all this verbiage in there and saying all the rules. I think it just, it opens, it opens the idea. It can't overwhelm, like, oh, maybe I could do this. I don't know. Just my thought.
Yeah, we'll look into that, but I understood it the same as Lynn in terms of either you have a policy for it or it can be done anyway, so.
What if the policy is they're prohibited?
We can check on that.
You could add a minimum number of seating or something like that to. See, that's why, that's why I'm not sure we'll be ready for the twenty-fifth. I'll be quite honest with you, but, um.
We just would like to get it.
I understand.
Solved relatively soon.
Yeah, Jim.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, might have been just oversight or maybe I was just being too nitpicky. But on page four, item seven, it references Franklin and Berkshire Counties, Mahishu, yada, yada, until April first.
Yep.
Get rid of that?
It will all be corrected to say Burlington.
Okay, and on page ten? It has on-premise liquor holders and then off-premise liquor holders. It says weekdays and then Sundays. It doesn't say Saturday.
I guess they consider.
Saturday's a weekday now?
I mean, we can clarify that.
Yeah, that's all. It's just, to me, weekday is Monday through Friday, and then the Sunday. It just doesn't reference Saturday. That's all. That's all.
But still, send Lynn your comments, concerns, et cetera. All right. Subcommittee reports. Let me start down the right-hand side here. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't have a subcommittee report, but I do, I did want to say, um, what a great week last week was for Burlington. Um, we get invited to ribbon cuttings all the time and restaurant openings. And, you know, I didn't think it would have the impact it had on me. I mean, we all know what the reputation of Burlington Water is. And for my entire life, and I've lived most of it here in Burlington, half a century, um, the water has been kind of like a punchline. And we had two events last week that, number one, what the town did and everyone working together to put together the PFAS facility as fast as we did. And even though, to me, it doesn't seem fast. Apparently, two years in the, which I'm learning in the municipal realm, is lightning quick. And the foresight that was shown by, um, John Sanchez and the DPW crew to preorder the filters, everything. It was just a, it was just a great, great thing to have the congressman here. And then the very next day to celebrate the initial connection to the MWRA. And I was blown away by some of the things I heard when, um, it was worth getting out of work for during the speaking. And when the gentleman from the MWRA said that the MWRA has voted the cleanest water in the country by a panel of X-thousand vote people or voters or whatever. I mean, for Burlington, our little town, our little village, to go from a joke of a water, a water situation to the quote "cleanest water in the country" is awesome. And again, I can't wait till two B is completed in 2025 when we finally can have 6.5 million gallons per day of MWRA water, along with what's going on, um, down at, um, a mill pond. I mean, it's just, it's an amazing, amazing thing what everyone has done. The DPW, all the committees, the departments involved, town meeting, um, the police department, doing all the details. I just, during those, during those remarks, I heard all the things people were saying, that the whole, like, the Herculean effort it took, involved to connect us to the MWRA and the fact that, yeah, we're going, cutting up Lexington streets right now to do this. It was awesome. And it's a great, it's a great time to be in Burlington. Things are going on that are unbelievable with the development. And sometimes you get beaten down by all the negativity you hear in life and how, you know, how long things take or this horrible humidity for me. But I mean, last week was awesome, and it was an awesome week for Burlington. And it's an awesome week for generations of Burlingtonians to come. And I hope everyone is like as excited about this and as pumped as me. It was, I could go on for another hour about this. It was so cool. So that's all I want to say, Mr. Chairman. I, thank you.
Well said. Well said. If you say Burlingtontonians, Burlingtonites.
Burlingtonians, I don't know what that is. Maybe Sydney can correct me someday. I don't know what we call them.
Michael Wellsett, thank you very much. Joe, anything?
Uh, I don't have any subcommittees, but I am gonna, actually, it is a subcommittee, I guess. Uh, the Landlocked Forest, as I bring up this time of year. Uh, October second is the actual opening day of deer hunting season. Uh, archery only on our Landlocked Forest. Uh, we had twenty-one applicants apply this year. Fifteen of them passed proficiency test. The rest of them failed. Uh, that's not an easy thing to do. Uh, so I'm keeping that in check. But the fifteen people that are going to be hunting in that area, um, just trying to keep it, uh, that people know that they're gonna be in there. Uh, the first part of the hunting season is archery. It's all camouflage. So be careful. Uh, people will be walking in and out of there with their bows and their arrows. They have a little tag, and on the tag it will say, hunting permit from the town of Burlington. It's, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, oh, one. I'm the only person that knows who oh, one is. We don't want to give out any names or put stickers on cars or stuff like that so that no anti-hunters, which I'm gonna get into in a second, can do anything to their cars. Right now, we have a problem with someone stealing cameras and tree stands and ladders and, um, all kinds of stuff in there. Uh, two guys' ladders have been stolen. Uh, three guys' cameras have been stolen. One guy had his camera cut up and left there in pieces. These were a hundred and fifty-dollar cameras they used. They strapped them to their trees and they show what animals are going by, what people go by. These guys are smart. They're coming in from the backside. They're cutting them off and doing the damage and leaving them there. So, uh, trying to get pictures of it, we take. But anyway, it's October second for the public out there that the hunting season does start for archery.
Very good. Thank you very much for the time and effort that you've been putting in. This is the tenth year. I was gonna say, for a long time now.
That was the tenth year.
Thank you very much.
What happens if something happens to you? Then how are we gonna know who the hunters are?
Yeah. Here we use our redundancy.
I got a guy.
All right, all right.
Mr. Priest?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna make a comment, but I'll, I'll, we'll talk to you a little later. Uh, no, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tiggus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, August this year was a very busy month for the fire finding, uh, Burlington Fire Department. Uh, they started out the month uh, by being a very big participant in the Public Safety Unit at Wegmans. Uh, also during the month of, uh, August, they helped deliver a baby up on Route ninety-five. Both mom and the baby are doing well. Uh, they responded to a building fire, numerous crashes. They did over four hundred and fifty apparatus runs and two hundred and thirty-three emergency medical calls. And then one other quick report. I had the honor of celebrating, uh, India's Independence Day, the seventy-sixth Independence Day with members of the Indian Association of Greater Boston on the Town Common. Um, they are so appreciative of the town of Burlington and how welcoming they feel and all the efforts we do that they gave us a plaque. The town of Burlington is an award of appreciation to the town of Burlington that we're gonna hang up in the town hall here. Next, probably the next step, photo of the five handsome gentlemen in the office.
What does the plaque say?
Presents the award of appreciation to the town of Burlington. We at IAGB extend our heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering support and invaluable contributions in commemorating India's Independence Day. Your solidarity involvement make these celebrations even more meaningful and special with regards to IAGB.
Very nice. That's it. Thank you, Jim, and all the members of the board. You guys, uh, all, you know, attend a lot of events throughout the year. Um, it takes a lot of your own personal time and effort to attend all these.